Yes.
Okay, alright then I'll go ahead and call the special meeting to order if you'll go ahead and stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, and I'll go ahead and unless, is there anyone here to give the invocation, Chris? What's that?
There is not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and give the invocation then. Our heavenly father, we thank you so much for this day and the opportunity to gather together to conduct business. We ask that you will help guide our discussion, help us to make decisions that will best benefit this city and help us to always keep our hearts and minds focused on you as our strength and our hope through this season. Amen. Alright, we are on chapter 12, Public Property. So we'll just go ahead and start with Article One, Parks and Recreation. This first page, did anyone notice anything that they wanted to have corrected? I, the only thing that I had underlined here was under 12-104. I figure, I didn't know if there was a reason to keep in the last sentence and expanding the board from five to seven members, unless it was just a historical point of interest. I was going to say we could probably delete that and just leave it, "The appointments of new members shall be made so as to assure staggered expiration of members' terms."
Yeah, I think-
Sounds fair to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody know the reasoning why?
As far as why it was expanded to seven? I, I do not, I'm, I'm, my best guess would be that there were some extra interested people that wanted to serve and there were only five seats available, and so the commission decided to probably create an additional couple of spots so that they could give those people some seats.
Okay.
Alright, did anyone else have anything on this page?
I would just say, I guess under 12-1-02, where it says his, you know, if we can keep it uniform like we had in the previous meetings, his, her, whatever, we had. Just so we can keep it uniform all throughout this code.
Sure. Okay, so on the next page, 12-107, I did not have anything marked. Does anyone else?
Can you talk about 12-105? Because it talks about the acquisition of land for park purposes. Is that anything that we needed to do when we were dealing with the water treatment plant? And we're talking about that land acquisition?
So, I think we certainly could, given that it'll be, the intent would be for a new park, obviously, and that is a step that we have not gone through, is the advisory board. So, we could, we could, I guess, route that through the advisory board to make sure they're on board with the plans for that land.
My thought there is if we have it in print and that's what we're supposed to follow, that's why I thought I better ask. Because I didn't recall that we had, that they were a part of any of those conversations.
No, they have not been, unless Phil brought it up to them without my knowledge anyways. But she may have, but I'll touch base with him on that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other comments over Article One? Then we will go ahead and move on to Article Two, Use of Parks, Page One.
Talk about 12, I'm really sorry, 12-107. It talks about the advisory board presents to the department and the city manager, and then that is reported to the governing body. Have we had any reports from them? Do you guys remember?
I mean, I don't remember specifically ever seeing a report from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Typically, it's always from Phil, it seems like.
Right.
And we used to get their minutes of their meetings and things, and I've seen that a few times.
How often do they meet, Mr. Weiner?
Every month or as needed. I don't think they necessarily meet every month, but basically when they have something to discuss.
Okay, would it be asking too much that we get the minutes after each of those meetings, and if they don't meet, we, we get something in a memo that says they, they didn't have a need to meet?
Okay.
I guess what do the other commissioners think?
Yeah, I mean, whenever I read that, I thought, I mean, the whole idea of going through it is to try to take out those things that aren't applicable or try to commit ourselves to what it does say so that we're actually receiving or doing what our code says. So, since it has, since it has it in here, unless we want to take it out, I would say that you all should probably hear from the Parks and Rec Board.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I think the minutes from all those committees on a routine basis would be good to have. And maybe, I'm sorry.
My question was just gonna be, were the minutes for their meetings going to be sufficient, or did you want to try to see a more formal report from them, or just the minutes?
You know, I think if I, I think if I saw the minutes or the agenda, I'm sorry, if I saw the agenda and then read through the minutes, I think for me, I think that would give me a pretty good understanding, and then I would always be able to ask a question if I had one, but I would ask the others what their thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I agree, and it could be as easy as you attaching it into the city commission packet.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and then that just kind of makes it, if they're gonna post that on the web, then he's got a copy of all, of all of that. I just think it would be good transparency.
Okay.
Alright, so anything else over Article One? Alright, now let's go ahead and move on to Article Two, Use of Parks. The first page, any comments or questions or revision?
Did I read the part about the dogs in the park? Is, is it correct? Did I read that right, that we're not supposed to have dogs like up close to this, when we pull and things like that? Because, I mean, I've seen that, is that, did I misunderstand that? 12-204. It says for dogs trained to assist.
Yeah, I believe that they are prohibited in those areas. And I believe that they have been, I think I've seen them there before as well, but.
Yeah, I have too, and I, I'm, I'm not trying to be a pill, but I'm just, if that's, if that's something that we're gonna be making decision on, it's like, I, I think probably, I guess, we need to enforce it, but I would say I've, I'd seen, I've seen lots of dogs in the park.
I, I do think that there have been situations, and I'll have to verify with Chief King, I didn't get a chance to before the meeting, but I do think there have been times when we've been dispatched to deal with such a situation, and they have tried to handle the situation according to code, but I'm not aware of any tickets being issued for this particular provision. Travis, are you?
No, typically, the only tickets we see are dogs running at large just throughout the city. I don't think they've ever ticketed anybody to having a dog in the park. Generally, if you see a dog in the park, it's got a leash on it and people are walking it. There may be a rare instance where one has gotten away from the owner, but I don't believe they've ever ticketed somebody with having a dog in a park.
And, and I don't know, maybe we might want to talk about that, about a dog that's not on a leash. Does that, does that matter, or does it not?
Also, a dog not on a leash, or I believe it's under voice control, is a dog at large and is subject to being ticketed under current code provisions.
Okay.
I think the part-
I've seen more than a dog on a leash. I've seen dogs not on a leash. They might be close to the owner, but they're not on a leash.
I think the part that I find confusing is that number three under that subsection A says within any municipal park, but then it goes on to say dogs elsewhere within any municipal park. It's almost as though it's saying they're not permitted at all in the municipal park, but if they are in it, they need to be on a leash.
I agree that, I think clarification there needs to be made.
Yeah. Agreed.
I think that if you just, well, I mean, if you take out that number three, within any municipal park, since it seems like B speaks to controlling dogs on leashes if they are in a municipal park. I mean, number three there is just confusing in itself because elsewhere it talks about dogs being in the municipal park and rules regulating them.
Want to just omit subsection three under A, under A?
Or I guess three, three could be, B, the item B could be done away with and just put item B as number three, and it might clarify it. That would leave three B in there. Or no, I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, because A is talking about where dogs-
B, no, it's alright, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit different. Yeah, I would think that just deleting three. Now, I don't know whenever they were changing or making up our code, if that was supposed to, where it says within any municipal park, if that was supposed to be a subsection that describes B and C, maybe?
That would be my guess.
I mean, it seems like it's describing B and C more than being a part of Section A.
Right.
So Chris, do you think that we should, I mean, it'd be possible to go ahead and just make that, I mean, do you think that would be best to just make that a subsection heading within any municipal park describing B and C?
We could, I think, given that both B and C specifically state municipal park, that I, I think it's not necessary to have within any municipal park, because then it goes on to say within any municipal park, or dog, any dog in any city park. So I don't, I don't think if it's necessary, but it doesn't hurt.
Well, then we could go ahead and just delete it entirely.
Okay.
If everybody's okay with that.
Can somebody explain why it says dogs elsewhere with any, any municipal park?
So it's saying, other than those that are outlined in subsection A. So in subsection A, it references the Garnet Municipal Stadium, ball fields, and tennis court, volleyball court, basketball court, et cetera. Dogs elsewhere within any municipal park.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, do we have anything else on it, on page one specifically? I didn't have anything marked here.
Is everybody good with the fees? I just circled those because we've talked about fees in other places.
Oh, is that on the second page? Sorry, I just want to make sure everyone's good with the very first page, 12-201 through 12-207.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good there? Okay. Yeah, then let's go ahead and go on. Okay, so the fees. When is the last time those have been changed? It looks like there's some ordinance, 3669. Did that ordinance have anything to do with changing the fees? Travis, do you know?
With it being that far back and not having it in front of me, I honestly can't answer that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure when ordinance 3669 was codified, but I didn't know if it had anything to do with the fee.
Sure, yeah, we were on, I think, forty, the early forty-two hundreds or late thirty-nines when I started, so that, I'm not sure, I'm gonna have to pull it and look.
Okay. Oh, Travis, do you know how many people do we actually get purchasing these permits to use a non-highway vehicle in the parks?
This year, we seem to have a bunch, mainly ATVs out at the reservoir. Is the big one. And I imagine we probably do, maybe, I'd say a dozen, half a dozen to a dozen. So we do quite a few of them.
Yeah.
So, I, I looked up 3669, and it does set the rate of permit fee at $10 and $15, and $5 and $7.50.
When was that?
This was 2006.
Okay, thank you for finding that.
Absolutely.
I mean, do you all have an interest in increasing it? We could always no bump it $5 if you wanted to, or just leave it.
I only wanted to ask because it seems like there were some other things in here that we were getting like at the fees, so I didn't know if that was something we just wanted to circle, and we could come back to later, but.
If you don't mind, I think there was a discussion at an earlier meeting about curbing the fee talk until we had all fees, we were gonna do like one mass ordinance to cover every fee to catch them all at once.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe the intent here, collecting the page numbers and going through and making sure we have a good slate of fees that we're gonna look to address, and then we can try to present one recommended list of potential changes for you to review.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Chris, you do have, I know that we had discussed some fees before in the past, back, I don't know, a couple of years ago. Do you still have that information at least to take into the fee meeting you're going to have?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sure I have some of it in my notes back within the book, so I'm not exactly sure which area. I just know that we had discussed some.
So, you know, like, Chapter Three, 702, that one specifically, you wanted to change the fee to $100.
Okay.
I, I've got a list of-
Okay. Yeah, no, that's good. I just wanted to make sure that you had this, because I knew in the past we had discussed some of them.
Now, on the 12-209, the, so side-by-sides are, are legal, so they don't have to have a permit at the reservoir, or the North Lake, or the South Lake for that matter, to operate, is that correct? I mean, that's been a change made a few years ago.
Sorry, I, I missed part of that. You said it's side-by-sides are are legal, so they don't need fees, was that just a-
That was my understanding of what was decided, say, like a couple of years ago.
So, I believe-
Because they're legal in the city of Garnet.
And the side-by-sides, we were requiring to be basically permitted out at the, out at the reservoir, or at the parks, I believe. Even if I read this, this section always confuses me. I think we need to rework this particular section, in my opinion, because it's confusing, even if we try to come up with the same, same end result, this, this part always is a challenge.
Hey, Chris.
I recall the conversation.
Did you want me to kind of interject on this? We currently sell permits for ATVs out at the reservoir, so four-wheelers, not UTVs.
Yeah. Thank you, Denver.
Okay, UTV, UTVs or side-by-sides are, they're legal, right, and don't have to have a permit? Is my recollection.
I, I believe anything that is a highway legal vehicle is permitted, because this section specifies that it's unlawful to operate a motorized non-highway vehicle. So if it is a highway vehicle, it is allowed in those areas.
But I don't think a side-by-side, which is legal in the city of Garnet, is not legal on a highway, I don't think.
Well, I think define the previous section.
I thought, if, well, I remember when it came up, it was mainly addressing at the reservoir, and everything required a permit, but yet, side-by-sides and those kind of vehicles were legal in the city of Garnet, so I thought that was extended to the reservoir to make it uniform with the city.
I, I mean, from what I remember, I thought that is how we interpreted it back then as well. It's definitely not how this reads, though.
And I think one of the issues that we had in interpreting this was it specifies here to operate a motorized non-highway vehicle as defined in the preceding section, and it is not defined anywhere in any preceding section. So I think we need to add a definition for motorized non-highway vehicle.
Where was you saying that, Chris?
12-210A says, "It shall be unlawful and a violation of this article to operate a motorized non-highway vehicle as defined in the preceding section." And I can't find anywhere where it defines it. Because if it's defined legitimately, and it's gotta be able to be driven on a state highway, then you know, you can't have a golf cart, you can't have a UTV, and you can't have those things on KDOT highways. And if we want to allow that, then we need to have a different definition.
I think, yeah, I think, I think Terry could have quite a bit input. We, we've talked about this in length in the past, and and all the variants of vehicles and their terminology.
I can get with Terry if you'd like to try and see if we can clean this section up a little bit.
Chris, under 12-208, is there a reason that is in there? I mean, was there some ordinance that used to be there that is no longer applicable, and it's just a placeholder, or?
So that's actually what I was looking up here. Twenty, ordinance 2732 was passed in 1985, and it I'm finding the right section here. I don't, I'm not seeing where that particular ordinance addressed this section, 9-5-8, so I'm not sure that the code here is, because there's nothing to do with speed limits in this ordinance. This is all about camping, boating, swimming, fishing at the lakes.
Right, it's, I mean, speed limits are addressed, what, in traffic, Chapter 14? So it seems like we could probably delete this reference.
Unless you wanted to add some type of language about speed limits within the parks, I think that would be probably the route to go, would be to just remove it.
Does it have the speed limits in the park somewhere?
You could put it at four, or, or 30 mile, 30 mile an hour.
Yeah.
What, Greg, sorry, it's hard to hear you.
Let me speak up, either as posted, or at 30 mile an hour. I suppose that, on top of most everything, then maybe, I can't vary, I know it's slower than that. But it's, I think, it's posted at the, it's lower speed, like 20 or something like that.
And the 12-210, number three, it talks about at a speed of greater than 15 miles per hour.
That's just referring to those not, motorized, not, motorized non-highway vehicles.
Okay.
I think that, I mean, hold on, let me look at Article Two, under traffic. I mean, it kind of covers, let's see. Says in a business district, urban district. I mean, it seems like that, it seems like our speed limit section would be the appropriate place to to add anything about speed limits, since there's a whole section dedicated to maximum limits there.
And I don't believe it does address specifically parks there, so if you did wanna go ahead and add that in there about you know, maximum speed limit within the parks, whether you did it there or in, in the current section, either way, you could certainly add some language.
I, I think that's the important part. It needs to be one place or the other. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I care where we put it, but it does need to be in one of those.
If you go ahead and put it under speed limits, it would be easier for people to find, having all the speed limits together in one spot. If everyone's okay with that, it seems like it's kind of having handy, having this list here saying, this is how fast you drive in this area of the city, if it is actually uniform throughout.
I, I would agree. I think it all, it should all be together, so it's not just got throughout the whole time.
Okay, so to make a, a note, I, under maximum limits, I, I missed it earlier. C6, it says 30 miles per hour on any roadway within any park, within the city or owned by the city. So it is in there.
Well, look at that.
Where did you find that out? Because I know I, I knew I read it. Where did you find that out?
Fourteen dash three, page number, section fourteen, two oh one. C six.
Okay.
All right, then why don't we just go ahead and eliminate that one section then?
Everybody find that section?
Uh, twelve dash two zero eight.
We're going to add it to the traffic session, section.
Yeah, I mean, it's already there. It looks like it's already in there.
Did you find that, Mrs. Cole?
I did.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. On twelve dash two one zero, Chris, you already probably saw this, but under two, the campground, the hyphen. Also on number four, the way the sentence read was kind of strange. It said, the operator shall. Make all reasonably possible efforts. I was just going to say make all reasonable efforts. Delete possible and make the word reasonable. So it reads a little cleaner.
Okay.
Are we still on page twelve dash five?
Uh, I just finished my comments unless anyone else has anything to add.
The only thing I, I see on twelve dash two ten, item number two. That I said that the motorized non-highway vehicle should be ridden. In a camp or playground area as well, if you're in the campground and you have one. Uh, vehicles, you, you gotta get it to your, your, I guess, point of residence for the night, so. It. It's kind of open for interpretation, I think, on that. If they're staying in a camp and they have one of those vehicles. They're, I'm going to park it there, they would. But by the way, that's worded to me, they'd be a violation of, of that.
So you're saying that, that that section, or that sentence should be removed?
Well, I, I, I can agree with the playground areas of any park, but the. If you're camping at any of the campsites. And, and you have one of those vehicles, you're gonna, you're gonna pull it up your camper and park it at, at night or whenever you're there. So by this, it, it would be to me that they, they shall. People shall ever be ridden. Should ever be ridden in any campgrounds. So I don't, I don't know, it's, to me, it's. It's open to interpretation, I think.
I, I guess. My thought would be, at least the way I interpreted that would be. The actual campground areas themselves would be off limits, but if you got. Your ATV out onto the actual road or trail itself. And then drove it, that that would be fine. They're just trying to prohibit people. You know, driving between campers or whatnot with the ATVs. Somebody might set the grass camper and get ran over.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I. That's what I would hope, but I guess. As far as an officer, it could be, uh, however they interpret that.
Do you, will you want to try to add some clarification for that?
I think that would be great, some clarification.
Any thoughts on how to word that, or I can see if, if Terry might have any ideas?
I, I, that's what I would recommend.
Yeah, see what Terry has to say. Also, I mean, the only thing I can think of right offhand is if you are trying to clarify it based on. Like sleeping loc- location or. I mean, using a different word instead of campground to describe, because. If the intent is the same as playground areas of the park, then it makes sense that the idea is to protect those people who might just. Um, be going about their business. So, I, I mean, just finding a different or an alternative use for campground to describe where people are camping or have. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
That's all I had on that page.
Okay. Commissioner Cole, did you have anything else on twelve dash five?
I don't. I was trying to think of a word that you could put in there.
And I was thinking like. The area restricted would be only the immediate camping facilities?
I was wondering, do we have things posted that say they're restricted areas? Because you could just say that. And restricted areas of the park, which would include. The campground, the playground areas. I don't know.
Or any, any campground green area or something to that effect.
Yeah, okay. I'll see what might be able to come up with.
Or.
Something to the effect of shall be ridden in close proximity to other users of said campground and playground areas.
There's a lot of discretion there. What's close proximity?
Yeah, I, I think Terry can help you with that.
All right, uh, twelve dash six.
Dash six?
Oh, sorry, page number. I just turned to the page.
All right, twelve dash two eleven.
Sorry, Greg, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, I had a question on, still on twelve dash two one zero. Uh, where, where it says shall forever bar the person from the operation of motorized non-vehicles in any city park. So is that meaning that if they're ticketed for one of these violations that we have up above here? They cannot operate, um, their non, their ATV on a city park. Uh, I, I don't think that. That should be right. I think that we should change that. Because, you know, if you're ticketed, I, I think you should still be allowed to, allowed to, um. Operate your, you know. Thereafter.
What number are you on, Cody?
Five.
Five.
Number five.
Where's the?
The last line, it's the last line on five.
Forever bar the person from operating, uh, of motorized non-vehicles in any city park.
I think that, I mean, I think that it's primarily focusing on those, uh, what, driving under influence.
So if they get pulled over on their ATV or whatever. Whether it be any violation or a DUI or what have you. They will forever be barred from operating a motorized vehicle in any city park.
Uh, I think it's, would only be, um, your third violation. Of being on, uh, a DUI of either alcohol or drugs. Um, at that point, uh, third conviction would be revocation and forever barred. But if, I guess my suggestion would be. If we remove that particular restriction. That we look to, as we've discussed on a couple of other things, have a tiered structure on that fine. To that, um, you know, your, your first offense, your first conviction, you know, if you get, want, want to get, uh, another. Get your license back, it's a higher amount. You know, if, if we're going to let you get it the fourth time, if you've had three, three DUIs on an ATV in our park. It'd be a lot higher fee to get your, um, your permit. So that way it's still allowed, but it, it's something to where hopefully. You realize I don't want to get another DUI and have to pay a higher fee.
I mean, just from my opinion, one DUI is too many. And this is a privilege, and if you're that irresponsible that you already have three racked up, then I don't think that the city should be issuing permits.
Okay, and, and I.
I, I, I think it should be a tiered system. I don't, I, I don't think that, um, everybody makes a mistake. And I don't, I don't think that they should be barred. From one time.
Well, I just meant three times. It's three times.
Right, but I think that needs to be spelled out.
Well, it says.
Yeah, it, it, third violation, I, I see it up there.
Oh, okay, yeah, I do too.
Okay, all right.
It would only be barred if you had three DUIs. Now, granted, it does say, um, that it's. Regardless of when the convictions have occurred, you know, one could be when you were seventeen, another when you were twenty-eight, and the, and the third time when you were forty. And then you can never get another city permit.
Well, that would go against, uh, statute limitations, but, uh. Um, technically, I think, but I, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know. Terry's not on here, but, all right, I see what you're saying. But, okay. That answers my question. All right, I'm okay with that. I see it.
It would, it would also be only for DUIs, um, while on the vehicle itself, like. While utilizing it. So if it was just, you got a DUI in your personal vehicle. You know, driving home or something, that that's not going to qualify as, uh, something on this. For this code. That's a totally separate ordeal. This is only if you're utilizing a, a motorized non-highway vehicle, um, in our. Park areas.
Okay. And that'd be a, a, a permit or not a UTV. Or a side-by-side.
That, that, it would be for the, um, well, whatever we end up defining motorized non-highway vehicle as. And it does say be, uh, subsection B here, um, that. The terms used in this section so have the same meaning as those in the KSAs. So my assumption was that it was meant to mean the same thing as what. The standard traffic ordinance defines a motorized non-highway, non-highway vehicle as, which is, you know. Golf carts would count, UTVs would count, so that's what my assumption is for this, but given that it doesn't. It says as defined in the pre, in the preceding section, and there is no preceding section that.
Right.
So I, I think that certainly needs some clarification, and if you desire that to. To be different than the KSAs allow for, um, the STO, um, then we'll certainly need to define that separately.
And I, it's a whole nother can of worms, but I. Especially in this day and age, I, I don't, I really don't see a nickel's worth of difference between a four-wheeler there. And a side-by-side. I know when the conversation was initially had. They were, I think they were referring to like the old John Deere Gators that would only go. Twenty, twenty-five mile an hour. But, but these things keep getting bigger and bigger. In fact, it's side-by-sides. Every bit is bigger, bigger than the, than the four-wheelers nowadays. I mean, they're just keep getting bigger and bigger. And more powerful. So I don't see a nickel's worth of difference, other than the size, the side-by-sides are a little bit bigger.
So would there be a preference on how to define this then, and what we want to allow? The same as what we're doing now or, or modified?
Well, it, it would be a whole other, pretty big conversation, because we've already let side-by-sides drive on the city streets, but, uh. Like I say, I, I just don't hardly see the difference between a side-by-side and a four-wheeler. Other than the fact that a, a side-by-side is a little bit bigger. Be a little bit easier to see. Yeah.
So Greg, are you saying that, um. Are you talking about specifically the definition, how we should define it, or do you think that all of them should be, all including UTVs, should be required to pay a fee? Because I thought that you, um, didn't think they should pay a fee if it was a UTV, because they drive in town. Sorry, I'm just trying to clarify what you're just talking about.
As the rules stand now, as I, as I recall, that. UTVs are allowed in the city of Garnet streets, and we extend that out to the reservoir. To be the same, have the same rules there as here. My, my only thing I'm saying is that the, uh, non-highway vehicles, the difference between a four-wheeler and a UTV are, are pretty minimal, I think. But we, we, we could, I, it's whatever you guys want to do, if we carry on like it is. And save that conversation for the, another day or the future, but, uh.
Well.
I don't know.
What are the differences? Because honestly, I don't know. So I'm just asking. Greg, you said there, that there weren't, the differences, there weren't many, so I guess I'm just asking you because I, I honestly don't know. I don't know.
An ATV, a, a four-wheeler is not allowed unless it has, um. You're supposed to have liability insurance as well as the, um. You know. Glow-in-the-dark.
Triangle emblem?
Yeah. Um, maybe, Chris, you can explain a little bit further for Jody, uh, Mrs. Cole, if you would.
So some of the, uh, you know, the, the. Primary differences at this point, because Greg's right, a lot of the. What used to be differences, uh, aren't there any longer, but, uh, you know, some of the. Most, some of the primary differences are that a ATV typically has handlebars, whereas a UTV side-by-side has a steering wheel. Um, you have, uh. Whereas on a four-wheeler ATV, normally you, you sit, uh, and straddle the, the body. Um, on a side-by-side, it's more of a, of a bench seat, and it's like sitting in a golf cart or, uh, something like that. Uh, so. Uh, I think in general, you know, the most side-by-sides are a little bit bigger, a little bit heavier, but, you know, they're coming out with four-wheelers now that are. About the same size as well.
Okay. Thanks.
So for now, we're just going to let it stand as is, and we'll reserve that, the ATV conversation for later during the future.
Well.
Chris, I think that it might also be helpful, because I think that it's article eight under traffic, worksite utility vehicles. That is what allows them to be driven there, and it has a description of what that is exactly there. A lot of people obviously don't have. Insurance, like Cody was saying on there. At least I don't think they do. On their four-wheel.
I'd like to write them on this, you have to have insurance on.
Sure, yeah, for, right, for worksite utility, but you know, I don't think that. What is it, ATVs are allowed to. As, I, I mean, it doesn't qualify as a worksite utility vehicle.
Correct. Correct.
Good with, I just, I just never have really seen the distinction between the two very much. I mean, there are little differences, but.
Sure. Yeah, uh, Greg, under Article H, that's where it's defined, at least what a work site utility vehicle is, how the city has defined it.
Yeah, and so I think the, the most discernible or obvious difference is, as I referenced, the steering wheel and the, uh, the bucket-type seating, because you do have ATVs now that, um, are about as large, and so the other points of, you know, the width, the length, uh, the, the fuel and, um, the tires and whatnot, you know, and, and ATV may come close to meeting all that, but the, the bucket-type seating and the, um, and the steering wheel are typically standard on a UTV or, or a work site utility vehicle, um, whereas that's not the case with ATVs.
Okay, so should we go ahead and move on to page twelve dash six? I think that, uh, Chris, you're going to probably look at working on a definition for non-highway vehicle with Mr. Solander?
Yes.
Okay.
Twelve eleven, just that first, uh, sentence, otherwise shouldn't have that hyphen.
Right.
I know I'd love to offer swimming in the, in the reservoir in the North Lake, um, and talking to our insurance company, uh, they have severe reservations about us, uh, allowing swimming in our lakes.
I think we looked at this, Greg, uh, you probably remember, um, five, six years ago, or whenever I was on there, that, ten years ago. Um, and the insurance company told Joyce, no, completely no. Do you remember that?
I, I know we've talked about it over the years, several times, and it's always, it's never changed, it's always kind of boiled down to the same signal. Well, the fact, I think, gives us a lot ease of liability in those cases, but it still makes insurance a nervous.
Hey Travis, just out of curiosity, do you know how many people are, um, pay for permits for fishing?
So we don't, uh, we need to remove that section.
You did? Okay, I was wondering.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't, we don't do fish permits no more.
Okay. That's, okay.
Was anything decided on the twelve dash two eleven?
Oh, I, I think, but no. I mean, we're just keeping as it is, no, no people are allowed to swim.
Okay.
If at some point, sure, we can offer it, I'll, I'll be the first to jump on that and allow that, because, uh, I think if we could offer swimming at our campground areas, uh, that could significantly increase the amount of people that want to come to our, lakes and camp, but unfortunately.
I would agree with that statement. What was the reasoning? Why was it that they, they didn't advise that? Do you guys remember? I mean, what was the?
We don't have a beach area. Um, i- if we had a kind of a cordon-doft beach area, um, I, I think it would be something that would be more, that they'd be a lot more willing to, to allow or to, uh, be comfortable with. But, you know, in looking at trying to do our own beach area, um, the reservoir specifically doesn't have a great area to, to accommodate that. Uh, when you get a decent rain, the, the whole area floods. We try to put in any kind of sand, um, out there to, to make them, uh, a beach, and we get a decent rain and, and that sand's gone, it's gonna just wash into the, um, into the body of the reservoir, uh, you know, we, we'd have to, put a lot of money into basically having a, a significant sand bed, um, to try and to actually have a decent beach area, which is unfortunate.
Okay.
I think the North Lake would be more amenable to it, but there's not the, not a, a great area for that either.
It, it was in my experience in the past that we offered swimming at the swimming pool for this year. So, uh, yes, that's true, that's all true, but.
Okay, so just to, uh, clarify, under the fishing section, all of section A is to be removed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone have any comments on the rest of page twelve dash six? So that's really just the hunting section?
I do not.
Okay. So twelve dash seven, I noticed number three said reserved. I wasn't quite sure what it was reserved for.
I had that circled as well with the question mark.
Why, I, on nu- number five, I had marked down, always referred to it as trout line, but the trout line is probably the proper terminology, I'm guessing.
Oh, well, the trot line is, uh, prohibited by the state, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
I, I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I think it is typically called a trot line instead of a trout line, though.
Okay. They're probably for hoping more than just trout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Chris, that number three, though, do we need to keep that in there, or can we eliminate that?
I think we can probably eliminating it. I'm looking up, uh, ordinance thirty-six hundred right now, the most recent ordinance, and seeing if it has anything in here about that.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to know why it's there before we take it out.
Does anyone see anything else on this page?
I think, going back to Jody's comment, I think that it might be just a, a duplication of, um, the state's ordinance against trot lines and, um, lakes that are monitored by the state. To answer your question, um, I think that's correct. I mean, we can get with Trent, uh, McGowan on that, but.
And I wonder a lot why it's gotta be in there. I mean, it's under the Kansas Wildlife and Parks, under the fishing guidelines, I mean, public cover all this stuff.
Right, so it's just a duplication of, um, of, of, of their, their ordinance or their law, um, against.
Thing would be like the local Creole limits and those kind of things, and length of limits and all that.
Yeah.
Chris, did you see anything from thirty-six hundred or past ordinances?
So thirty-six hundred has it in there, just as reserved for future use, uh, no explanation as to why. Thirty-five forty-four doesn't address it, so I'm looking up thirty-four forty real quick. But so far, it just seems to be a placeholder for, um, no apparent reason.
Well, um, when you get with Mr. Solander to talk to him about the definition, if you could just ask him about it, and if it's non-essential to have it, then to go ahead and remove it.
Sure, we can always, you know, if, if there's something in the future that you want to add to, uh, be a violation of this section, you can always add an additional, um, an additional subsection to add a violation.
Right, I mean, I don't see why they would have to reserve a number three anyways, if you did want to add something, it seems strange to me.
You you shouldn't need to, so I would say, I would recommend, uh, we just re- remove that.
Okay.
And thirty-four forty doesn't address anything about it either.
Okay, any other questions on this page before we turn it to the next?
Nevermind, sorry.
All right, then, page twelve dash eight. I didn't, I didn't have anything on this page.
So we need to also remove the city boating permits?
Okay. So just section B and all under there? Well, I guess one.
Yes.
Uh, A stay, uh, two, two fourteen A?
If you would like it to stay.
For speed restrictions?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I, I see that for, like fishermen, it says to keep it at, uh, unless they're water skiing, if they're fishing, they gotta, they're restricted to trolling speed, but, you know, most fishermen, wherever they're headed to fish on the lake, they, they buzz right over there, and then, and then they troll around or, or set anchor, but, but they don't go trolling speed the whole way across the lake to get to where they're gonna go fishing.
Maybe they should go at a trolling speed and they won't scare the fish away.
Maybe that's why it never catches any fish.
So it looks like what, this is only, uh, for Lake Garnet that the speed is restricted, is that correct?
I think that was referring to, and, and there's, uh, the, uh, somewhere in here, there's the, when you can, uh, ski out there, it's and Wednesday and every other Saturday, or vice versa, maybe it's every Saturday and every other Wednesday, and
No.
There were some weird, weird rules on that, on water skiing anyway, it's North Lake.
Right.
And we did run into an issue here, uh, not too long ago with regard to a motorized boat being on Crystal Lake. And that I guess historically, we have allowed motorized boats to be on Crystal Lake, as long as they didn't use their motor. Um, because if it, if they use their motor, then it's violating the, um, I guess the intent of the law, which is not wanting to have motorized boats on the lake. Um, however, uh, do we want to legitimately enforce not allowing motorized boats on the lake? Because the challenge there that we ran into in trying to prohibit motorized boats is that then a lot of people can't get their boats out there, because they're not gonna physically remove their motor so that they can take their boat out on the Crystal Lake. Cause it's, I don't know, but apparently it's a fairly significant chore to actually remove the motor um, and, and take it out on the lake.
Why, why they let them on that lake with the motor? Is it because it's smaller, or?
Yeah, so, uh, the, the lake itself is significantly smaller, and it's, um, the depth is not near what the other lakes are. Um, you, you disturb a heck of a lot more on that lake, uh, than you do with, with a motor than you do on the other lake.
Okay.
Well, I think at the South Lake, you use a trolling motor, can't you? An, an electric motor? You just can't use a combustion engine or, or a gasoline styled motor.
Well, true. True, but so I, I think, basically, people will have a trolling motor and a normal gas motor. Um, and they will be out on Crystal Lake with both, in a boat with both motors. They just won't, they'll just use the trolling motor and won't use the gas-powered motor, a- and that's what we allow, but according to this code, technically that boat shouldn't be allowed, because it's got a gas-powered motor on it. It's got a gas-powered motor mounted.
I do the reason that was my place is because we used to pull, uh, the second and then pull that into the log plant, which you know that this, they, they were probably making pollution uh, in our drinking water. But I, yeah, I think as long as they're not actively using their combustion engine and use an electric, electric or trolling motor, they should be, I would think they should be fine.
Okay. So would.
On board.
So would the commission be agreeable to, uh, quit tweaking that language to remove that section where it says no motorized boats should be permitted on Crystal Lake, and basically say, you know, th- those electric-powered trolling motors will be, uh, can, can be utilized, but gasoline combustion engines shall not be, uh, or shall be prohibited from use on Crystal Lake?
Yeah.
I think.
I would be fine with that, as long as the trolling doesn't notice up where it's really shallow.
I think if that is what you are currently practicing, then that's what needs to be in here, and if it hasn't caused issues, then there's no anticipated issue with it, then it'd probably be fine. Okay, any other questions over twelve dash two-one-four? I mean, at least on page twelve dash eight, because we're gonna go over to twelve dash nine.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions over twelve dash nine?
I didn't.
I didn't.
I don't have anything marked.
Okay. From twelve dash ten.
I didn't have anything marked on that page either.
I didn't either.
I don't have anything marked. Mr. Weiner, is the, are there any of those that anybody has promised to you about that have been a problem?
Something I'm aware of.
Okay.
All right, so twelve dash eleven, the only thing I saw was the period at F1 before valid, other than that, I didn't see anything. So, uh, twelve dash twelve, are we okay with moving on to that page?
I am.
Okay. The only question, Chris, I had was for K, there's no actual title there for the subsection, not that it's really necessary. The only question Chris I had was for K, there's no actual title there for the subsection, not that it's really necessary. I didn't know if you wanted to add one. The only thing I could think of to describe it would be right-of-way, but if it's fine leaving it blank, then that's fine. I just wasn't sure why there wasn't a section since usually there's some sort of title for the subsection.
I agree, and L is the same way down below it. And I, that's a pet peeve of mine as well. I'd like to see something.
Why leave it blank? Yeah, if we could come up with some titles for that. I was just thinking K seems like a right-of-way section. The only thing I could think of for L was proper use, but I, I mean, you can get creative if you want. Glad to know it's your pet peeve too. Alright, anyone have any other questions on 12-12? Okay, I did not. So 12-13.
I didn't have anything marked.
I didn't either. Commissioner Cole, did you have anything?
Don't have anything marked. I just, I guess I just wanna make sure that, Mr. Weiner, there hasn't been anything. Because I agree if it's in place and it's, it's working well, there's no need to change it, but no suggestions on that page.
At this point.
Okay.
I guess the 12-216A, it, all of that, North Lake Water Ski, the holidays, and and how it's there, where that.
I mean, it is kind of odd, our restriction there, Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday, and the first and third Saturdays, but we haven't had any complaints that I'm aware of, unless Travis, you filled in some that I'm not sure of.
Uh, Greg?
Sorry, go ahead Travis.
No, go ahead Cody. I was just saying, we haven't filled in any, any issues with the, the speed boating or waterskiing issues. We haven't had any, I don't think.
Greg, I think if you remember back, a few years back, several years back, they had an issue, and I think this is why they put this in there, was because some of the fishermen or whatever, had an issue with being restricted to fishing at the North Lake during the water skiing events. And I think this is kind of where this section stems from. Do you remember that, Greg?
I think it was, I think it was probably put in place to accommodate the fishermen and waterskiers that had the big waves going by. As a young man, it's like, I've been, but I've been, and now we have the waterskiing anytime we wanted to run. So, that nears restrict, hopefully, it is now a red waterskiing.
You're breaking in and out, but what happened was, and I think this is back like 10 years ago, some people came to the commission and they were complaining about being restricted to being able to fish at the lake during certain events. And I think this is kind of where this, this right here stems from, is what I have highlighted. But I don't know exactly what Greg said. He's kind of breaking up there on my computer, but I, I think, I think that's where that stems from. And you would have been on the same time.
I think all the time restrictions at the North Lake were in place, probably close to 40 years ago. They're the same now as what they cleared back then.
Okay, well, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I do remember people coming to the commission complaining about having restrictions to the lake during certain events, but.
Alright, so there weren't any more substantive changes though to 12-13, correct?
I don't have any.
Well, go ahead, move on to 12-14. I, I didn't have anything on this page.
I did not.
Yeah, I'm good. I don't have anything marked either.
Okay, 12-15. Another fee page to just talk about later, but otherwise I didn't have anything.
At the top, I'm gonna say governing body and Statisticity Commission, if you wanna keep it the same.
Yeah. Alright, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, 12-16. Now, Chris, I just had a question on number two, where it talks about the camping unit and seven consecutive nights. I know that we had talked about this, at least in regard to campers and had changed that. Is this referring to camping, like tent camping?
So I believe this particular section is referring to really any camping, I think. But I think the, the main issue we run into is with the, you know, the RVs themselves, the people who wanna park for, you know, like we've ran into here this, the past couple of years. You know, transient workers working on bigger projects that come in and wanna stay for months at a time. And they wanna just be able to have a consistent place to park their camper. That's what we ran in, ran into.
So is this a section then that you would need to, I guess the exception that we made for the RVs, that was, was that a temporary decision from what I remember, based on the situation we're encountering there, the work sites? Or was that something that we passed that was a permanent?
Yeah, I believe that was a temporary provision essentially to, to deal with the current situation, as well as I think the intent was that while we'd be going through this in the, in the near future, and so we could revisit a more permanent discussion.
I thought it was gonna revisit the first year, probably, and, and we, we just had part of the camp stalls that were extended stay, is that correct? And then, and then the rest under these guidelines?
Yes, and let me try to pull up that ordinance real quick.
If it's a, well, we can bring that, extend that if we want, same as, same as this year.
So the ordinance suspends the the provision of no camping unit shall stay at the same campsite in any of the city parks for seven consecutive nights until the end of next year. So that suspension ends December 31 of 21.
Okay. I'm good with that, let's go.
But they can move to another camp spot and then do your next seven days and then move to another camp spot and then another seven days, yeah.
True, they, and that's what in a lot of cases they've done, but there's quite a few people who find that to be a fairly significant inconvenience. And so they try to, they'll just go somewhere else instead of camping in our spots.
Gotcha.
So I would just probably recommend that at the end of this provision that we have, the provisional ordinance that we had approved, just reevaluate how it has worked out. If it looks like you want to keep it at that point or change the language here, because it has worked and there hasn't been any issues, then revisit the text at that point to, to allow for more permanent, well, not permanent, because obviously you don't want people living there, but something comparable to allow for extended stay.
And I do think with the emergence of a few other longer-term campgrounds in, in our general area, that the risk of having people stay at our campgrounds for a year and just live there has been significantly reduced. I think the original concern was that we wanted to try to make sure that those camp spots were available for recreational purposes, for, you know, people coming into the community for a weekend or whatnot. And, and I don't think we have as much risk given that we have where Taylor Ford was, that campground, that campsite now, as well as west of town, the Zook's established one. There's plenty of spots available for people who want longer-term camping. That, to be frank, are a little bit better suited than what we currently are because they provide sewer services, but we don't have that.
Okay. I'm sure you've already seen that camp sites is separated there with a hyphen.
Yep, and provided on F.
Yeah, the definition.
The only, that I missed on the last page, 12-14, or 12-220, vehicles on grass in the city parks. Because Chevy unlawful, free person operate any vehicle upon a grass area in city park. I didn't know if you were comfortable with that. I mean, to, to me, you know, that could be that there could be a gray area there with, with regard to camping. You know, we, especially like for the Grand Prix and whatnot, and we, we have all kinds of cars parked on grassy areas in the, in the park to the Grand Prix. Not like we're gonna go and check at all those property or all those car, vehicle owners, but on the same hand, I feel like we should be following our own ordinance or provide, providing for an exception or something.
Yeah, you might wanna include an exception for events or
Like special events, because that's how it's worded on some other things. I probably would do the same way.
Okay, so you can go ahead and add that in then.
Okay.
Okay, so 12-16, any other comments?
Didn't that?
Okay, I, I didn't either. 12-17.
I didn't have anything on mine.
The only question I had was related to be the city's right to enforce section 136 of the Uniform Traffic Ordinance. I didn't know if section 136 was still the correct section to be referencing. So if it is the correct section to reference, then just leave it otherwise updated. Because I don't know whenever they update the uniform, Uniform Traffic Ordinance, if it changes numbers or not.
I apologize, which section is this?
This is 12-225B. It says about the third sentence up, city's right to enforce section 136. Just make sure that's right.
Okay. Absolutely.
Alright, any other questions on this page?
I did not.
Roller skating, does it need a hyphen there?
Google that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the grammatical.
Or if it's just one word. Okay, 12-18. I did not have anything marked. Did anyone else wanna else have anything marked?
I did not.
I would say no hyphen.
Two words or one word?
Two words, two, two words, no hyphen.
Alright, Article 3 Cemetery. I don't think it had anything here. I mean, we still have someone, I'm a cemetery sexton, so to speak, don't we?
So, we still have somebody who's kind of in, in charge of the cemetery, you know, I mean, Brian Malone is who is tasked with those responsibilities, but I wouldn't necessarily say his title will officially be sexton.
Okay, so, I mean, and you, you didn't really even directly appoint him to that, did you? I mean, wasn't it just probably Phil?
When, you know, at least since I've been here, the cemetery's just been maintained by the Parks and Recreation Department collectively.
Okay, so should the language change to represent that then? I don't know if it should be a representative, or the Parks and Recreation Department shall appoint someone to be in charge of the cemetery, I mean, to reflect what is actually happening. Or if you want to go ahead and, and choose to kind of fess that over.
I can visit with, with Phil and see kind of what he would prefer on this.
Okay, sounds good.
It's kind of what, I guess, part Phil duties, I guess, is it, it's under, under his flag, I think, most of those duties at the cemetery.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on 12-19? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to 12-20. Are all, I mean, I guess that's kind of like a fee discussion, but I didn't know if all of the numbers here were correct.
So in, in terms of the, the current fees, I believe they all are correct.
Okay.
But it is something that again, we'd probably look to address in the overall fee resolution.
I just wanted to make sure that in the meantime, there wasn't anything that was wrong.
And I think the cemetery lots, the, the fees were changed probably when, in the last four or five years or something like that, I think.
Yeah, ordinance 3820.
3820 was It'll be a lot faster once we get fiber.
It looks like it would have had to have been because 3820 affected both 12-308 and 12-311, but no other section of the ordinance. So I'm assuming it was an increase of fees. I just don't know how long ago that was.
2010.
Okay.
Is when they changed, is 2010.
Okay, any questions on 12-20 to 12-21?
I did not.
I did not either. So I'll go ahead and move on to 12-22.
12-13-13, be the amount of permits, so that may be addressed later. Yeah.
Yeah, the $20. Okay. Chris, is the money that's received, does that currently go into the general operating fund?
It does. Cemetery charges go into the general fund.
Okay.
Mr. Whiter, on 12 dash 314, when it talks about filling settled graves, is that it's a one time thing or is that the responsibility of the city to make sure we do a good job of working with making sure those stay level because there's, there are a bunch of them out there, tombstones that are is that our responsibility to make sure that ground's level or is it the person, would it be mine like my parents? There's this, but who, who's responsible for correcting that?
So technically, you buy the plot of land. And so it is your responsibility to maintain the tombstone and and any issues regarding the tombstone. The city's responsibility is that we maintain the grounds in terms of keeping it mowed essentially.
Okay, but not like there are a lot of tombstones out there that are, you know, like this. So would that be the family?
Yeah, if it needed to be like reset, then that would be on the property owner or the grave owner to
Okay.
If we do. Granted, in a lot of cases, that doesn't happen. In a lot of cases, you know, people, family have moved away and so there's no one left in there. Continue to deteriorate unfortunately. And that is something that, you know, if you decided you wanted us to try and and remedy some of that, that, you know, we could attempt to do, but obviously that would be more resources than what we currently expend.
Okay, all right, thanks.
There's been money expended on leveling up tombstones and things and I'm not, can't recall where the money came from, but there's been money for that and they've made different attempts at straightening up some tombstones and working on them.
So in some cases, it gets to a point to where we do try to to do some of that. And I know, you know, the previous community that I worked for, we, you know, it would even certain mausoleums would get in a state of disrepair that, you know, we went ahead and tried to do some tuck pointing on those and do some things because you know, certain things get to a point that your hand is kind of forced, but technically it's the responsibility of the of the plot owner to maintain that.
Yeah, I was thinking of the ones where they're like broken off. And so it's going to be kind of hard to maintain around that if I've got you know, parts of that stone, but it's in the older section and my guess is there probably isn't anybody that would be able to, to repair that, so. It might be something we talk about down the road, but I just think it would be hard to, you know, take good care of that when, I mean, there are a lot of tombstones out there that they're, they're broken off and the pieces are all around, you know, the foundation part.
12 dash 23. Under E. The only thing I had was under E, it says grow in X, the second sentence there, grow in excess of as height instead of a height.
Just remove the S?
Yes.
Yeah.
Otherwise I did not have anything else. At 12 dash 24. Chris, the only question I had for you is under 12 dash 317, section C. The reopening of such grave and removal of such body or ashes shall be under the supervision of the city manager. I just didn't know if that was under your supervision.
It probably should say, or they're designated.
Okay, go ahead and add that in, change it to whatever's appropriate.
Before you get any ideas, the answer is no.
So I'm guessing you've never had to do that, Mr. Whiter?
I have not.
Yeah, I, it was interesting reading, so yeah.
Okay, any other questions over 12 dash 24 or 12 dash 25?
I did not.
Okay, I didn't either. 12 dash 26, Crystal Lake, Article four.
Well, I think
I think the only thing that confused me.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say 403 confused me because we have camping there. I mean, south or near Crystal Lake at least, so I didn't know, Chris, if you could clarify this or if there needs to be something added except for in designated areas?
Yeah, so I think just adding the term except in designated camping areas would probably be sufficient.
Okay.
And I apologize, I meant to mention it earlier back on 12 dash 21. 12, 309, the establishment of a regular perpetual care fund. We don't, to my knowledge, I don't believe we have a regular perpetual care fund that has ever been established. That would be a mechanism with which that, you know, we could utilize if somebody wanted to, you know, say donate to have resources, be able to help go toward repairing headstones out there. You know, mausoleums, et cetera, but to my knowledge, we don't we've never had such a fund with resources in it.
At some point, the way I recall in the past, there was some monies expended. I don't know where the money came from or how long ago it was, but $5,000 comes to mind. I think they hired somebody to that were supposed to deal with as many, as many stones as they could for that amount of money. But, you know, it's a long back. Maybe before we got here, Chris, I don't know. I guess so.
I want to say the same thing, Greg. I think that was from I don't want to say lions, but there was a group of people that went out there and did something like that. I I don't know, something comes to mind. I'm with you. I can't remember though.
Yeah, and Ruben may even involve in some part of that at one. They made like two rounds of it and he may have been a part of it, the second round, I recall.
That might be a call that we would make to Joyce and ask her to kind of pick her brain on that.
Chris, could you look up ordinance 3110? I'm just curious to see what it says or how this may have changed.
Yeah, Joyce would know about that for sure, but.
And I can certainly reach out to Mrs. Martin and and I know, as I said, I don't believe at the moment we have anything, but that not to say that we couldn't go ahead and get that reestablished if, or established if we, if we wanted to still do that. 3110 was passed in 94. Looks like a lot of these regulations were established at that point in time.
Oh, so do you think that it was just added at that point or did they actually amend anything on this one?
Well, I'm I'm confused here. 972 that it references isn't establishment of a perpetual care fund. It's name of city owned cemetery in this ordinance. See if it might be in here. Okay, there we go. 979. So it looks like it was established to accept funds for individuals for the upkeep of burial lots back in 94, but I don't I don't see where it, you know, it I don't see it having any resources back in 16 or 17. I don't see it even on my list here. Family change systems, but.
Well, if you want to check to see if there's a need for it or if it's something that has even been used. Because the way I'm reading this right now, it says the upkeep of burial lots, but it sounds as though it's describing pieces of ground and I mean, the city already is maintaining that unless it's referring to people asking the city to take care of the tombstones and whatnot as well.
Okay.
I mean, I would just check to see if there, when the last time this fund was actually used. And see if it is something, I don't know, it does if it's not something that is used and there's not a, or the way that it's written up right now, I just can't discern whether or not it's actually adding anything to what the city already does for the land. I mean, unless this is a place where people who don't have any, like know they won't have someone to keep up their grave or the tombstone and they can give money to the city to maintain it for a certain period of time based on however much money they have. I don't even know how you'd be able to discern how much that might cost or how you would charge them, but I don't know, I don't know if this is just something that is antiquated based on what the city currently practices.
Yeah. It's certainly something we don't currently do, but.
I don't know that it wouldn't be a bad thing for people to know if you, if you were to maybe so it is like the trust fund or a place where people can donate money to help.
What's up, Keepin' Cemetery?
So the city hired a company from Iowa a while back. I think Herb Waring was in charge of that. And they came in and they fixed up the tombstones and what have you, but I just gave Herb a call and that, so that's where that came from, Greg. What you, what you brought up just a little bit ago. So I don't know what company that was. Herb Waring would be able to probably, you know, give you an answer to that company or who came in and did that, but but yeah, so the city did hire somebody to come in and fix up those headstones.
Cody, was that through a donation from somebody then?
I, according to Herb, he said it was paid for by the city, so it
Okay, so not necessarily a donation.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so Chris, if you just want to look into that and kind of get back to us, research it. All right, so we'll go ahead and go back to 12 dash 26. Any other questions aside from adding except in designated area on 12 dash 403? Are we good on that one? Okay, so we'll go on to 12 dash 27.
Oh, I'm sorry. I say I'm muted. I was muted.
What, did you have any questions on 26 or 27?
I, I just had the on 12 dash 501, I, I just had marked from the governing body, I had, I wrote down city staff. What do you guys think of that?
Yeah, I think that permits are issued from the city, so it seems, I mean, more so than from the governing bodies. That seems more appropriate that way. Chris, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that makes, makes good sense.
Okay.
12 dash 502, I didn't quite understand that whole deal, I guess.
Yeah, I don't either. I think that needs to be worded differently.
I mean, I guess you could say that something like a float for the Christmas parade would be a temporary structure built on a trailer or vehicle.
But, you know, nowadays, there's, there's lots of and not lots, but there are campers that got platforms on top of them. So well, I stayed, I stayed in one once. It had a platform on the, on the roof of it, so you could get up there and and see over the over the terrain. I don't know that I've seen it much around here, but like I stayed in with an individual at Kansas Speedway and it had a platform on top of his camper and lots of them did. And it was a permanent structure built onto their camper and you could get up on there like a deck and, and see out over things.
Yeah, so it sounds like they would just probably have to have a, I guess, a written permit. Well, it says if it's a yeah, either stationary or movable on or off a vehicle, they would have to have a permit. So I guess any alteration or it seems like construction, erection, temporary structures. So I, maybe if it's not a temporary structure, if it's a permanent structure, it wouldn't actually apply.
I think anybody that would have a, an outfit like that is never going to think to go get a permit for, for that. I mean, I just think it could be stricken.
Chris, you might have with Chief King to see if he knows of any instances of running into, I mean, how this is enforced, if it's actually something that they use or if there's not something also in I don't know, traffic section or I don't know if it'd be under the uniform traffic. I can't believe, the Public Offense Code or not.
I think that, um, it probably shouldn't be stricken because. It should be, you know, something should be in there so that, you know, they're not running into power lines or anything like that, you know? I think that's probably why the, the sentence was in there, if that makes sense.
Right, I, I, I agree, I just didn't know if there's any further clarification that might needed to be added to it. But checking with, um, I think Chief King might help bring some clarity to it as to how it might be revised. Uh, appropriately, I suppose. If it nee- if it even needs to be.
A moving violation.
Yeah. Yeah, Jody.
If we are going to, I don't think that we have a, uh, a permit form currently drafted for this. So it might be something that we need to come up with, uh, a new permit for and have a. Fee, I guess, on that fee resolution at some point. I wouldn't think there'd be much charge to. To this one, but, you know, it, it could be something that if somebody's looking at building a. A temporary structure on, you know, out of the. North Lake for something, that that would be something we, we might. You know, if we're gonna have to inspect, uh, um. Giant. Structure, somebody, you know, has some big event, that might be something that, you know, have square footage or something. For fee.
Well, that's, yeah, this is saying on the vehicle, though, I, and now that, uh, there's, there's new. Campers that even fold down like a deck, you know, come out, so they're, they're probably more common having structures, scaffolds, perches or platforms.
Yeah, I can't see what you're saying, on a vehicle, you're kind of limited to what you. Could construct, I guess, if you're a part compared to if it's a temporary structure like a big tent for a wedding reception or something. Okay, um, are there any other questions for twelve dash twenty-seven?
Mr. Weiner, with Chief King and get back with us on that, or so we're leaving it?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was. Okay, um, twelve dash twenty-eight. If this has anything similar to how we handle library board at budget time, then I guess we can't have comments over this one.
Well, this is, this is where you have the, uh. This is your authority.
Well, did, I mean. Are, as far as the appointments are written, Chris, is all of that correct? Is that how they handle the, I mean, the dates where they handle most of their appointments, or? Is this one that would be changing based on what we spoke about having most reassignments or appointments happening in January?
So this need, um, this is no longer current, uh, because you passed a charter ordinance. That ended up going through, um, and so their appointment term schedule is now ending December thirty-first of each year.
Okay, so let's go ahead and change that, uh, to make it relevant.
Does the other commissioners agree on that?
I think that's certainly always.
I didn't hear what she said.
Oh, well, I'm just saying that. We already passed a charter ordinance based on terms, moving all the terms to January. I just said we need to update the section to reflect that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, any other questions over this section?
Did you say there's? That we can change these things or we can't?
We can.
The budget, we can.
Yes, we can. I, I was just talking about the budget.
Yeah, I laughed because I had, yeah.
So you. You appoint the library board members, same way with the housing authority. But as it is currently set up, once those. Board appointments are made, they have autonomy over those. Departments and budgets. So you don't, like you do the rest of the city, uh, you can. Control me to an extent, you can, you control the city's budget, um. You don't have the same level of authority with regard to the housing or library authorities, executive directors or budgets. Now, you can, you can change that, uh, for instance, you could have the library, um, become a department. Under the city's umbrella, um, but that would require another charter ordinance and that's significantly different than what we've ever operated. They currently have autonomy, you, your supervision or oversight of that autonomy is by appointing board members.
I think the thing about the different boards that we have. Is the fact that I know they have a hard time getting new members on there. But some of them read that they have a certain amount of time that they can be on the board. And then, and, and if I'm looking at this one, you can be on it two consecutive times, but then. You're off for at least two years before you can come back, is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure. I know the other boards have, there's my, look a little bit different, but I'm not sure that we're good about following those. You know, like. We have some boards that some people have been on there since. They started.
So I believe this is the only, I believe this is the only board which actually. Any type of, uh, li- limitation on term of office. I don't think anything else has that provision to where you have to step off for at least a certain amount of time.
Could, could I ask a question? I, 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 why do they have, uh, that type of autonomy whenever? Was, well, uh, give the ACDA, uh, an example, um. You know, why do they have autonomy as compared to the ACDA, the, uh, steering committee and other boards like that?
The ACDA, the steering committee, Parks and Rec Board, et cetera, are city-created entities. The library board and housing authority boards both have statutory protections in state law. In terms of how that they are established. And they, and they were established under those statutory regulations. The city has the right to essentially establish them. Similar to the way you did, the way the city has done ACDA, um, but that was not the route that was chosen. The planning commission is the same way. The planning commission has a certain degree of autonomy with regard to what they do. Uh, there are certain things the city commission cannot do until the planning commission has acted first. And the planning commission. Functions as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals, which has complete autonomy and. Their decision is final, it doesn't come in front of the city commission, once the Board of Zoning Appeals makes a decision.
All right, were there any, uh. Other questions here?
What would be the, um, I guess, the, the rule to change that to, uh. Make them, those boards on the same level as the ACDA, the, uh, planning commission and other boards like that. To make them on the same playing level.
So the planning commission, uh, with their statutory. Authority, there's not a way around, um. That, as far as I'm cons- as far as I'm aware, the, uh, the library board and the housing authority, I believe, both. Could be modified to be brought under the city umbrella, um, to be more, as it's more advisory in nature. But with the library board specifically, that would require a charter ordinance. The housing authority board, um, I'm not exactly sure what that process would entail, I'd have to get with, uh, city attorneys, we'll enter on that, but. Both endeavors would, would require, um, some significant, uh. Work and modifications in terms of how the, the structure is, is currently set up. And. I don't, you know, that, that would be.
Conversation for another time.
Very different than what we're doing right now. And what we've always done anyways, not to say that that's, you know, uh, that what we've always done is the right way, but that's just. I, I.
Well, Cody, I.
Where I've worked anyways, so there's never been a, a library that I, in the three cities I've, uh, I've worked for, the library has always been autonomous. The one thing I would suggest with regard to, um. Uh, the library, given that they are, uh, a, a, uh. An entity that levies property taxes, uh. It might behoove the commission to consider an ordinance or adding language into this, uh, into this document that. Caps the library's mill levy, because technically they have the authority to request any dollar amount. That they need and it is the city's responsibility to levy it on behalf of the library. And so if they, they say we need two million dollars in property taxes to, to, um, run our operations next year. The city has to do it. Now granted, I don't think that the library board is ever going to do that, I don't think that those, uh. You know, those board members are ever gonna make that kind of decision, um, but. If something happens to where, oh, we. We need a lot more money. You know, they have that right to say, we want X and the city commission has to levy that on behalf of the library board. In the current.
Chris, I was like.
Go ahead, Greg, sorry.
I was thinking that the levy on library was capped it, I must say. Sound mails, but I, I can't remember, but I thought.
I, if it is, I don't recall that, but I could be wrong. But I'll, I'll need to look into that, I guess, but I don't recall ever seeing where they were capped.
Well, I would, I personally would be all for cap, I, I like. Cody, it's been, I, I guess, kind of an ongoing thing. I've had some issues at times with, uh. Some of the library's funding, but I, but I will, will say overall, the library's done an outstanding job of, of maintaining. Their employees and their, uh, the sales, the, the biggest trouble I've had. With the library board, the way it's set up, uh, say we're gonna give, uh. Whatever it is, a two percent raise to the city employees, well, the library board is gonna give a five percent raise and we have no choice in that. And, and, and to me, that just don't right, if it's. If it's running through the city, they. It should be uniform across the board, I would think.
I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't, um. Uh, specifically talking about the library board, I was mainly concerned about the housing authority, but.
The, uh, you know, and the, the library board or the library's operations and the housing authority's operations. Technically don't have to go through the city. I know, for instance, the housing authority, I believe, prior to my arrival. Um, didn't go through the city, they handled payroll on their own, they handled their own accounts payable and they handled everything on their own. But it ended up being that, uh, they found it to be more effective and efficient to run through the city for payroll and billing, et cetera. And so, uh, partnered with the city to, to make that better. And that's been the, the process ever since, and I believe the, you know, the, the library, um, is the same way, uh. In a lot of cases, a lot of cities will just cut the library a check for whatever their distribution is in property taxes, uh, the city just basically serves as a. As a middleman or a go-between and gives them their tax distribution. In our case, the, the library utilizes us for payroll and billing purposes, et cetera, um, I. I happen to think that the process that we utilize works, works great and, uh, you know, I don't think that there's any issues with. With the way things are, uh, operating currently, um. And li- and like you said, Greg, I think the, uh, the library board has done a tremendous job of, of, you know, managing their budget and keeping costs under control and, and. Andrea Sova, the library director, does a, does a fabulous job of that, um, so, you know, I don't think that, um, you know, by. My, my, uh, idea of, you know, a cap on the mill levy is by no means meant to be, um, punitive because they're doing a wonderful job. It's just that, you know, a future library board at some point, uh, could have a situation arise where they think, well, we need to. Levy wha- whatever in, in, in resources to, uh, handle our budget next year and. We real- wouldn't have any recourse unless there's a, a law in place.
Thank you, I, I was just asking from my own intuition, uh, so, thank you for clarifying that.
Are the other commissioners, or, or what are you guys' thoughts on, on trying to establish some, some kind of cap so we don't just get, uh. Stuck someday with some wild request and we haven't, we have no options?
I mean, for me specifically right now, from what I have seen, I feel as though they've been responsible and. With the funding and I just, I don't foresee them doing that, I mean. I don't know, on this, on this matter in particular, I feel like I'm siding more with, uh. With just trusting the library board with the job that they have been doing and based on how they have. Handled the money up to this point, I don't think that there's a reason to take any action, I guess, against them or to, to lament them.
My, my only thing is, uh, what, what they're doing or what they somewhat dictate to us. It, it shows up on our mill levy, so, uh. If they were to make a, a gigantic request, uh, we have no recourse. And it, it basically goes on our. On our books is, is a, you know, it just is our mill levy, so it, uh. To me, anything that's on our mill levy, we should have some sort of control for, um.
Yeah, it's kind of, uh, right, it's kind of similar to, let's see. So we are approving, or we are the ones who appoint the board members. So whenever we're appointing board members, knowing if they are, whether or not they would be. Those who are more. Spend through, I guess, uh, versus those who would want to spend a lot more money. So, I mean, that would probably where your, where your board would primarily see the most control is in who you appoint to the board.
Yeah.
And like, at light, and we changed something here, like you were mentioning, it's just. I don't know, um.
I'm kind of torn because I feel like they've been, I would agree with Mayor Brickison has. They, they've been great so far, but I also understand your point, Commissioner Gwen, that. There's nothing that says that they would have to continue.
I can remember though.
About that, I do, because I just feel like they've been very responsible and I. Yeah.
Chris, I just have a quick question, in the form that they fill out, I don't have in front of me for budgeting purposes. Isn't there something in there about how much they're spending so that they can actually be awarded grants? So I didn't think that it was really, I don't know, I thought there was something there that kind of would. Temper that a little bit, how much they would be requesting from the mill levy based on how much they would get, you know, through grants and whatnot. I can't remember exactly what is on that sheet or if that would. If that affects how much they would request annually.
So, the library is unique in that they get state funding that is tied to property taxes. It basically have to qualify in one of two ways, the, for this state funding, either the, the. Property taxes that are. Awarded to the library, to overall assessed taxes, so, and. Easiest way to explain it basically is the mill levy can't go down, their, their property taxes that they get can't go down. Or if it does, then the assessed valuation has to go up enough to cover the difference, so basically, they, they always have to be getting this. The same as or more money than they received the previous year from property taxes, otherwise, they will wind up getting. Their state funding cut, and so that is an issue that. At some point, you know, could become, especially if you did institute a cap, it could. Hamper at least one of the ways to qualify for that grant, if they were capped, because they, well, they can't increase the mill levy, if, if they need to, if valuations go down and they need to increase the mill levy. And when they can't, because they're capped, they could, it could be somewhat of a, of a double whammy, in that not only do they, can they not get the resources they need for property taxes because they're capped, but now they lose their state funding on top of it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I thought, I thought there was something more to it, so thank you, I appreciate that. So I'm not exactly sure where we stand right now, so do we want, I mean, Commissioner Cole, I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to see him write in some sort of cap right now, or wait? Okay.
Right now, I would, I would not want to see us put something about a cap in there.
Okay. All right, so is there anything else on this section? Art, well, Article Six.
I don't, I don't have anything marked.
Okay, I didn't either.
I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Article Seven, then. All right, any questions or comments here?
I didn't have any questions.
Okay, I did not either. Commissioner Cole, did you have any on this section?
I don't, I thought I had a question, but I'm not finding it, and I don't see anything marked, so.
Okay.
Guess that's a no.
Okay, well, that brings us to the end, and it is eight fifteen, so unless anyone in the post or has anything else they'd like to say, I'll go ahead and. Does anyone else have any questions or comments before I adjourn the meeting?
Nope.
Did not.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move the motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nice.
Go ahead.
Okay, meeting adjourned, Chris, what do you have to say?
Sorry, I forgot to mention in our last meeting, just a quick. Verification that the franchise agreement with Everji, that you agreed to. Go ahead and, and move that up to six percent last meeting, our expiring agreement was for twenty years, are you okay with it being for another twenty years, as far as the renewal?
I would be fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I figured as such, I just wanted to verify, so thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.